Can I call the meeting to order, please? 6:00 PM. Monday, July 28th. Common Council of the City of St. John meeting. We have Councillor Sullivan will be joining us virtually this evening. He's online, you can see him there. And we always start our meetings with a land acknowledgement. And this evening, Councillor Norton will be reading that. So, Councillor Norton, over to you, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. The land on which the City of St. John or Mennequins is situated is the traditional territory of the Wollustawee. The Wollustawee, along with their indigenous neighbours, the Mi'kmaq and Peskotomacotti, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources. Let us pause and reflect on that land acknowledgement. Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem. Okay, City Clerk, over to you for the next item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next on the agenda, we require approval of the minutes of July the 7th.
Minutes of July the 7th. Councillor Killen and Councillor Darling on the question. All in favour?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is item 2.2, approval of minutes of July 15th.
July 15th minutes. Councillor Stewart, the deputy, on the question. All in favour? Opposed? Oh, opposed, motion. Did you have a question on the minutes?
No, I just wanted to abstain from this one because I was not at that meeting.
Okay, yeah, okay. Opposed, so there's no opposed. Motion carried on 2.2 with Councillor Redwin abstaining due to her absence. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is the approval of the agenda, and we have a few additions from Committee of the Whole, and I'll just read out the titles of those. So, the first would be 17.1, termination of lease Java Moose. Next would be 17.2, City Market new lease Begle Artist. 17.3, City Market Kim's Korean new space lease. 17.4, City Market Market Street Kitchen lease. 17.5 is update on 2025 PMHP allocation. And 17.6 would be 2025 Bear Green Residence Project.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda with the additions. The deputy and Councillor Killen on the question. All in favour? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next, disclosures of conflict of interest, if we have any.
Not seeing any. Next item, City Clerk.
And next is approval of consent agenda.
Deputy, over to you for consent.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would move 5.1 through to 5.6, please.
Take a seconder on that. Councillor Low on the question. On the question, Councillor Redwin.
Mayor, can I just pull 5.1?
5.1, okay. Did you have a question on it? A quick question? Okay, 5.1, we'll pull that one. So, deputy.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would move 5.2 through to 5.6, please.
And then councillor, okay councillor Low. So, with 5.1, it will become a 14 on the agenda. So, on 5.2 to 5.6, on the question, all in favour? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is members' comments.
Members' comments. Okay, not seeing it. Oh, Councillor Redwin, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. There's lots going on in St. John. I just want to mention that the International Culture Fest is taking place August the 2nd to the 3rd on Water Street from 11:00 in the morning until 4:00 at night. Third shift will be taking place from August the 15th to 17th. There's all kinds of different artists that you can go see all over uptown St. John. Keep in mind that the City Market is actually doing their night market the last Thursday of the month, and that goes from 5:00 until 9:00 at night. Also, the city is putting on once again passports to parks. August the 9th is at the rez from 1:00 to 3:30. And the last passport to parks is August the 23rd, I think. I think that one's, I can't remember if it's Rockwood Park, I didn't write it down. 1:00 until 3:30. And I also just wanted to say thank you to city staff for all their coordination on getting the beach volleyball courts together at the rez. I hope that everybody gets out and uses it. We have some nice weather. Thank you.
That is a great addition to the rez. That makes for the beach and the volleyball courts. Very nice. Councillor Sullivan, over to you.
Thanks, Your Worship. All water-related, actually. Thank you to the staff who are involved in St. John Fort. Boaters can now use the full visitor's wharf at the Hilton in the harbour, which is perfect timing for the upcoming New Brunswick Day weekend. Since COVID, traffic on the St. John River has greatly decreased, but, you know, being named after the St. John Wollustook River, our city in the next week or so will be welcoming the Manchester Yacht Club again. It's been a few years since they've come to visit the waterways, but just the fact that we are the welcoming city on the St. John River system, hopefully this will continue, that the tourism from boaters, both from Nova Scotia and the northeastern United States, continues. So, welcome to those tourists who are coming up. And really, a thank you to the St. John River Society, while it's not in the city as kind of being the head of the St. John River. This group has done their own fundraising and taken almost a million-dollar grant from the federal government. They now own, maintain, and are improving 13 of the historic steamship wharves up and down the St. John River so that the public can continue to have access to them. So, all sorts of good reasons to be on the water. Just make sure that you're safe and wear your life jacket.
Thank you, councillor. Good advice. Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. As everybody knows, the City of St. John's been advocating for fair taxation for many, many years now. You know, we'd like very much to be able to keep our heavy industry tax here in the city. You know, by doing so, we would better have better roads, safer neighborhoods, have reduced municipal tax rate. So, right now, the provincial government has a survey online that you can go on and fill out and support the city, and I'm encouraging everybody to take a couple of minutes to do that. It would certainly enhance our city if this was, you know, able to happen and we were able to keep the industrial tax. So, you can go to the city's website to get the connector to the provincial survey site, and I'd encourage everyone to take a few minutes to do that. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, deputy. That's an important one. You can also do it by phone as well. It takes about five minutes if you do it online. And as the deputy mentioned, there'd be a couple of reasons why we'd want to keep the industrial tax. One, you have industry in your city, and then you would reap the benefits of that. Right now, there's the dual taxes on everything that's not owner-occupied residential. So, with that money, we could do more maintenance in the city for roads, et cetera, that end up getting chewed up a bit with 18-wheelers. We could be bigger partners in maybe crossing gates as if we had that extra cash. And we would also maybe put some money into amenities so that neighborhoods that had heavy industry in their area would then benefit from the heavy industry because we would have invested in a park or a beach or whatever that would be close so that the citizens could use. So, there's lots of good reasons why a city should keep that, and it also changes the narrative that industry is actually good for your city versus industry can be all of the risks that industry brings. So, that's why we're advocating for that. So, we're asking everyone to support us on that. Okay, so that's it for me. City Clerk, over to you for the next, next item.
So, next we have presentations that are scheduled. The first one is 8.1, and we have Christopher Quigley here to present Alchemy Art Workshop.
Mr. Quigley, come on down to the mic. Come on down, as they say.
Do I hit the button? Okay. Thank you all very much for allowing me to speak today. Again, my name is Christopher Quigley. I am from Mahone Bay, Nova Scotia, and I'm the executive director of a art workshop, a nonprofit in Mahone Bay, that's producing some transformative public artworks. A little background about me first is for the past 25 years, I have been in custom fabrication. I have done very large-scale projects, everything from all the custom lighting for Lansdowne Park in Ottawa, to we have one of the largest chandeliers that is in the Guinness Book of World Records for, in Cleveland, Ohio. If anyplace needed a chandelier, it was Cleveland. And we do other, my last project that I'm working on now is a 27-story media facade for a building in Richmond, Virginia, for CoStar. And so, this was not outside of my wheelhouse, but this project itself was born out of grief. Nova Scotia has announced that it was intimate partner violence and gender-based violence is an epidemic. And in January 2025, we had our sixth death in Nova Scotia, and her name was Elaine Mosher, and she lives in my town. And it was one of those kind of situations that I knew I had to be involved at some point and in some way. And how this project started off was housing. We thought that, you know, I wanted to buy the house and convert it into a transition home, so take it from someplace that was a horrible experience and turn it into something else. However, the woman that I met with, her name is Kellyanne Hamshaw, she's the executive director of Harbour House Transition Services, sorry about that. And she said, "I think that you can do something more." The Mass Casualty Report asked for men to step up and take a more active role in battling intimate partner violence and gender-based violence. And so, I took that to heart, and I took it very seriously, and I developed this project called Transformation of Dangerous Spaces. It's called, it's a traveling public art installation that's meant to confront men. It's meant to confront them with the uncomfortable realities of power and privilege, consent and complicity through highly immersive, multisensory, interactive experience. And this is done within a controlled gallery environment, so this will be a traveling road show that will go on the road all across Canada. And I've been visiting other town councils, much like yours. I met with Halifax, Lunenburg, Modal, Bridgewater, and Mahone Bay to get support and endorsement of the project to move it forward, to help open other doors. The, I also created this because I also have a very deep personal connection to this. This isn't distant or abstract. It's not metaphorical. It's historical, and it's personal, and it has been close to home. This project is rooted in my own lived experience, and is my way of turning something that was remarkably painful into something that will probably help others. And so, because it's rooted in lived experience, it's meant to be experienced. It's visceral. It's remarkably emotional, but it's meant to talk about the things where men learn, where they learn, and how they're socialized. And one of the rooms that I chose was a public bathroom stall in a locker room because that's where a lot of violence is taught. It's where the vernacular, the socialization, and the, just the vernacular and vocabulary of misogyny is taught and passed down. And so, it's an eight-stall immersive experience, and it's designed to mimic familiar gendered environments like public restroom stalls, places that are private, transitional, and often overlooked. But instead of ordinary stalls, each one becomes a confrontational installation that explores a different facet. So, each one has a different, different theme to it. The spaces itself are meant to be, this is, this is not just gallery art, it's meant to be an action. And so, the eight stalls that we have are a one-way mirror stall, a locker room stall, where it also explores how we've gone from an analog source of transfer of knowledge to now we're dealing with an online digital source, where it's still behind closed doors, where men are, men, mediocre men with microphones are provided a pulpit and a massive audience, and they are now passing this information along. They're being, they're teaching boys how to hate, and they're doing it at a scale that is unfathomable. So, each one is meant to have a very interesting and very remarkable visceral reaction to each one, and that's the point. Each one of these projects, and as we travel this across Canada, we actually have some trauma-informed practice where there will be trauma-informed therapists that will be there at the beginning of the, of the installation and walk participants through, and then have a discussion period at the end so that people aren't pushed into the deep end of the pool. So, one of the, one of the sobering statistics that we have here is that one in three women in Canada experience intimate partner violence, and that's a public health crisis. That's a justice issue, and that's also a local government issue. And despite decades of tireless daily advocacy, education, and awareness campaigns, those numbers still remain stubborn all across Canada. And so, one reason is that too often, the people who need to be part of the conversation, the men, aren't. And this project aims to change that. It invites men into the dialogue that is a way, that is direct, human, and impossible to look away from, and it's just my response. It's just one man's call, one man's response to this, to show up, listen, and take some accountability. So, we're inviting them into something really that's going to be uncomfortable, to feel something that's going to be raw, maybe even a little unbearable, but to sit in the mess that we created, because this is something that we created, and we have to fix it. We have to help fix it. We want them to lose the illusion of control, to confront themselves, to be accountable, not just in theory, but also in their bones, because facts don't change people, neither do statistics, and shame doesn't either. But experience will do something, and that lingers. And so, when that kind of change starts to rise to the surface, into policy, into prevention, and into justice. Again, this isn't just an art piece, it's policy in motion, and it integrates directly with federal and provincial and municipal gender-based violence prevention frameworks, public safety strategies, municipal outreach and community wellness mandates, and it also includes evaluation tools, visitor feedback, impact tracking, and optional facilitated discussions. This project is designed to travel to communities all across Canada, giving each one the opportunity to host and open the discussion. So, right now, I'm actively engaging with and collaborating with about 70 different organizations from across Canada, and now starting in the US, and funding bodies both locally, provincially, and internationally. And these partners and supporters are recognizing the urgency of this work and are aligned with our mission, and it's to drive systemic change by beginning with something deeply human, an educational artistic experience. In 2023, there were 123,319 reported intimate partner violence incidents. That's about 338 a day, or about one every four minutes. That's a remarkable statistic to still be having in Canada, and it needs to change. And this is only going to stop when men allow it to stop happening. So, right now, what I'm doing is I'm going across Canada to municipalities and city councils across Canada, and we're seeking provincial partners and municipal partners to provide us with support and endorsement, to provide in-kind support later on in the future, and to endorse the project as a vital initiative aligned with your community's values. We're not asking you for money, we're just asking you for support right now. We just want endorsement, and we want to be able to put this on the road and get it out there. So, it's not about blame, it's not about shame, it's about acknowledgement, it's about breaking the silence and standing in the discomfort, and it's about initiating change, real change, cultural change. So, we believe that every community has dangerous spaces, and every community has the power to transform. So, thank you. Thank you for your time, and let's help transform the silence into some action. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. That's, that's powerful.
Thank you.
And I think we would certainly probably, I would assume, be supportive of endorsing your, this journey that you're on and this whole project that you're on. It sounds like it would be, you know, I often think about hate and how, where does it come from, and how does it get developed, and, you know, what is the journey to hate? And then now, like, what's the journey back from that, or what's the recognition of it when you're not the victim, but you're the bully? You know, then that puts you in those other shoes, I guess, to a certain extent, give you that little bit of a, of an experience with it. So, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Brent, councillor Harris, sorry, over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation. Important work you're doing. I guess my question is, what type of support? Is it, is it a letter of support? Is it coordination support for the, for the installation if it comes to town? All of the above? Just wondering if we can get some finer details around that so we can have that discussion as a council?
Right now, it is just a letter of endorsement and support from the, from the City of St. John.
Okay.
Sounds good. Councillor Redwin?
Mayor, thank you very much. I think, you know, your project is something very important. And I, I do wonder, I, you know, whether or not we could maybe send this over to the Arts Centre and see if there's any interest there for, for in the future. So, the city actually owns space at the Arts Centre, and they, they do a lot of different things, and, you know, it's probably up to their board if, if they would want to, to host a project like yours, but I think, I think it's worth having a conversation, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so I would take a motion, I guess. I'll take one. The deputy to councillor Killen to, yeah, to support a letter. Yeah, definitely, a letter of support. So, on the question?
Wait, Your Worship, so, you need a motion to, you see, we need a motion to?
Yes, we're going to need both of those, correct? Or will we? Well, we need a motion for the letter.
So, we need a letter.
Yeah, I've got a mover and a seconder. Yeah, we've got a mover and a seconder on doing a letter of support. So, I'll call the question. All in favour? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Our pleasure. Thanks for being here this evening. Okay, City Clerk, next item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Now, we have our second presentation, item 8.2 on the agenda, and it's an update from St. John Energy. And here tonight, I see a number of board members, but the vice-chairperson, Colleen Dontrumah, and Ryan Mitchell, CEO, will be approaching the podium.
This need to be, it's gone? Okay.
Good to go. Once you see that red light, you're good to go.
There you go. Thank you. Good evening, Your Worship and members of council. I am Colleen Dontrumah, Vice Chair of the St. John Energy, and I pass along the regrets of Jim Shaw, our Chair. He's unable to attend this evening. I'm going to take less than two minutes for an introduction and then pass it over to our CEO, Ryan Mitchell, for just a little bit more detail and to entertain questions that you may have. St. John Energy was created over 100 years ago, yet it has remained relevant and in sync with customer demands and modern-day technology. It is one of the most innovative utilities in the country with a culture of questioning, answering, and delivering, and that is what sets us apart. The challenge before us is to remain relevant for the next 100 years. So, I want to bring to your attention the fact that legislation and policy around St. John Energy was initiated a century ago. It no longer meets the challenges that we face today, and it prevents us from benefiting the city as much as we could. 90% of Canadian utilities benefit from contemporary policy, and we're urging the city to work with the province to update our regulation as well. This will enable greater financial flows to the city and allow us to expand our services to customers to continually meet their needs over the next century. So, we look forward to delivering on our promises and meeting our goals in the year ahead, proving once again that your municipal utility continues to set the pace, strive higher every year, and meet the goals of the city as well as our utility. So, Ryan Mitchell, as I mentioned, our CEO, will provide a brief summary to you to, to go over our past year as well as the opportunities ahead of us. So, thank you for paying attention this evening, and I'd like to pass the podium over to Ryan.
All right, thank you, Colleen. All right, good evening, everyone, and I, first of all, would like to begin by thanking you, Your Worship, common council, and city staff for your ongoing support of St. John Energy over the past year. That support certainly matters, and it has helped us to continue building momentum on what I believe is some very exciting work here in St. John. And as our vice-chairman mentioned, I would like to highlight a few of those key achievements and initiatives from the past 12 months. So, let me begin by reaffirming what grounds us at St. John Energy, and that is our deep commitment to the people of St. John. That commitment comes through in a few key ways. First, reliability. Outages here remain among the lowest in the country, which reflects the steady efforts of our team to keep the grid strong and responsive. Second, as it relates to customer satisfaction, we're grateful to consistently be recognized among Canada's top utilities, something we attribute to the care and pride our employees bring to serving customers every day. Third is affordability. We know that cost matters, especially now, so we're pleased that our rates continue to be among the lowest in Atlantic Canada, and we're working hard to keep them that way. Then, as it relates to our vision, we are doing our part to support the shift to net zero with a focus on building a cleaner, more sustainable energy future for our community. And I'm going to speak a little bit more to those areas as we go through the rest of the presentation. So, as it relates to rates and affordability, at St. John Energy, we remain focused on delivering value, and that starts with keeping our rates as competitive as possible. As you can see here, our residential rates remain among the lowest in Atlantic Canada. That is a direct result of disciplined financial management and a commitment to smart, forward-looking decisions. We know that affordability is top of mind for our customers, so even as pressures mount across the energy sector, we are doing everything that we can to limit the impact on customers' Tackling energy demand is, is critical because peak-time electricity is expensive for us to buy, and it's also heavy on emissions because quite often it requires fossil fuel power plants to increase production. You can see in the chart here how every year, we have been gaining momentum on shaving demand by leveraging innovation through a coordinated and a comprehensive approach, and with that, considerable savings that help keep our rates lower. In 2024, you can see that we set a new high watermark with more than $2.9 million in Last year, the Burchill Wind Project supplied 15% of our community's electricity through a long-term fixed-price agreement. This low-cost green energy supply helped us cushion the impact on customer rates when wholesale power prices rose this spring. And while the advantages are impressive, the heart of this project is the partnership behind it. Burchill is owned and operated by Natural Forces and Nogoktok, the Tobik First Nation, and we're proud to purchase 100% of its output. So, this project is more than a supply contract for us. It's a collaboration rooted in shared purpose, mutual respect, and a commitment to build a sustainable energy future together. Zero 30 is our initiative to map the routes to how we might reach net zero, both in our operations and in how we'll help our customers get there too, if they wish. In essence, we are building a strategy, leveraging lessons learned from around the world, that is grounded in three pillars: cleaner energy, customer innovation, and preparing for rising demand. We're working to finalize the details of the roadmap this year, but put simply, over the next five years, we will focus on projects that meet three key tests. Do they improve affordability for our customers? Do they deliver climate impact? And then, do they make a strong business case for the utility? and the Federation of the Canadian Municipalities, a new $15 million investment that will make energy efficiency more accessible. This will help St. John families lower their monthly bills, it will reduce emissions, and it will create good local employment. It's a smart, community-focused investment and a clear example of how partnerships can turn real vision into real measurable benefits for our customers and our city. So, stay tuned for more details as we prepare to launch the program later this year. Also in June, June was a busy month, we shared some exciting news in a historic chapter in our energy evolution, the launch of St. John's first utility-scale solar farm. The monaucist Kesus Energy Hub, named to honor both Indigenous leadership and the power of the sun, will be developed and operated by our partners, Nogoktok and Universal Craft, which will be the largest solar firm in New Brunswick once operational. And just like Burchill, we've secured a long-term agreement to purchase all of the power it generates, giving us stable, predictable pricing that helps us manage costs and keep energy rates as low as possible for our customers. This is another powerful example of how we can achieve together and a clear sign of where we're headed. As it relates to our financial performance, you'll notice from this chart that the vast majority of St. John Energy's revenues go directly toward purchasing electricity and operating the system, the essential day-to-day services our customers count on. The smaller segment at the top of each bar represents our net income. While modest and subject to change from year to year, this portion plays a vital role in our ability to plan ahead. We approach our financial performance with care and discipline, which allows us to responsibly reinvest in critical infrastructure and support thoughtful innovation and ensure our system can meet the evolving needs of our community, especially as more of our customers turn to electricity as a cleaner energy source. Earlier this month, St. John Energy received $5.25 million in federal funding to advance one of the most exciting and forward-thinking initiatives that we will have undertaken. By leveraging real-time data, advanced technologies, and artificial intelligence, we will manage electricity flow more efficiently and intelligently than ever before. But it is more than just technology. It builds on our successes with renewables, energy storage, and peak-demand management that will allow us to achieve even greater benefits, measurable savings for our customers, enhanced reliability, and stronger support for renewable energy. Over the past year, we have continued to work closely with city staff to engage the province on modernizing our governance structure. Our goal is simple. As our vice chair just mentioned, it is to update our 100-year-old legislative framework to reflect the realities of today's energy sector and to align with the majority of other Canadian utilities. A modernized model would give us greater flexibility to deliver new services, improve affordability for customers, and support other communities interested in adopting the innovations that we have developed here in St. John. As I wrap up, I did want to give a special shout-out to our team over at St. John Energy. None of what I have shared would be possible without our team. It is their professionalism, pride, and dedication that power our reliability, our customer service, and our leadership in the energy transition. Our people are at the heart of everything that we do. So, this concludes my presentation. I really thank you for allowing us time on your agenda today and for your interest in the work that we're doing. Again, we really appreciate your support. We're excited about where we're going, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Ryan, you've got a couple extra board members up there with you. Did you introduce them initially?
Yes, we have Board Member Shelley Corser and a familiar face, I suspect, to many of you, Neil Jacobson.
Excellent. Okay, I've got a couple of questions here. Counselor Harris, over to you first.
Yeah, thank you for being here, Ryan. It's always one of my favorite presentations. Anytime we could have you guys in to give us the update, and these two recent announcements are just, you know, amazing. Like, four years ago, there was only, hey, maybe one day we'll get to a solar, you know, project, and now here we're fully heading down to have the biggest one in the province. It's a tremendous effort by your team and outcome. There's a lot of talk right now around the massive project out of Nova Scotia and the wind operation there, and it looks like the federal government is trying to do some connection to the Quebec Hydrogrid. What role do you see St. John Energy playing with the province in that, what is being called a national project out of Nova Scotia? Does St. John Energy play a role? Does this legislation help to connect some of those dots? And is there, I know there's a few questions in this, but is there a way that we can help as councillors in advocacy for some of the needles that need to move here to clear the pathway?
Okay, a couple really good questions there. So, there is a lot of change that is happening in the energy sector, which is creating a lot of opportunity, and St. John Energy being a relatively small and nimble utility allows us to focus on innovation. And having said that, we are small, so we do recognize, you know, our role in this can be to lead in showing other utilities how certain innovation and aspects can be done. So, if we can focus on, you know, whether they be, you know, reasonably relatively small projects at a national scale, but to show how they can integrate together with, you know, with AI and other advanced technologies, and, you know, again, we're very willing to share, you know, our wins and our losses through that to help, you know, with the energy transition. We do enjoy a very good relationship with the other utilities, you know, in the Atlantic region. We do participate quite heavily within Electricity Canada. I am on the board of Electricity Canada, so that is another way that we collaborate and share information. But, yeah, I would just come back to the legislative reform. You know, anything that council can do to lean in and to support advancement of that would be appreciated. I know it is supported by the St. John Caucus in government, and certainly when the premier was here prior to the election had vocalized her support for that. So, I think it's now, you know, focus on when can we get that over the finish line.
Yeah, we've been here, you know, we've been talking about some of these reforms being needed for quite a few years, and it's regrettable that it's taken so long to even get something on the table to look at. Do you have a sense of a timeline? Has the province given you a sense of what their commitment is? Because I guess we keep hearing mixed messages, or we're not quite certain at what their timeline is on introducing legislation that can achieve those goals.
I would say, and I'll look at Ian Fogan here to perhaps comment as well, but I would say that we do not currently have a firm commitment or a timeline for, you know, commitment. But certainly, you know, we recognize that a lot has changed in the world over the last, well, since the new government was formed, and there's a lot of priorities, so we are trying to be respectful, you know, of that, but at the same time, continue to express that we are very interested in seeing that reform happen in a timely manner.
Thank you. Deputy, and then I'll go to Counselor Sullivan, who has a question.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thanks, Ryan, for coming in. It's always great to hear an update from the favorite board that I was ever on. Shouldn't say that out loud, but anyway. The, you know, the thing that really annoys me is, everybody knows that it's in the best interest of not just the City of St. John, but the province, really, you know, to change this 100-year-old legislation. And we've known that for months, and it's very frustrating that it's taking so long. Do you have any sense that, you know, it's coming to, like, is there, and I know Counselor Harris is trying to get at the same thing I am, but is this something that, you know, we really need to light a fire under, or do you think that we're getting close to having something done?
Well, I certainly think that there is support. I know, even in a recent conversation from members of the St. John Caucus, that, you know, there is, you know, support there, you know, for this to advance. But again, I think it is important that, you know, folks be reminded that, you know, there is a sense of urgency around this, and, you know, there are opportunities that, you know, we could be pursuing. You know, if this was enabled, that would drive employment, that would contribute to affordability, you know, for our customers. So, yeah, I do think we need to continue to lean in in a respectful way.
In a respectful way. So, I mean, as a citizen, not as a council, but as a citizen, if I heard that, I think I'd be writing a letter, you know, to my MLA saying, listen, guys, this needs to be done for all of us. So, again, thanks for coming in. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Did you want to pipe in at all?
Just briefly, yeah. Yeah, through Your Worship to the Deputy Mayor. I agree with Ryan. Every time we do have conversations around municipal reform, it does come up, and we continue to advocate for that. I think a lot of it is exactly as Ryan pointed out, that there is some timing. There's different pieces of urgency every time we discuss that with the provincial government. There are, you know, things like tariffs have taken a certain amount of attention and a certain amount of breathing room in some other reforms, but there's unequivocal support from everyone we talk to. I think it's just a matter of timing.
Thank you. Counselor Sullivan, can I go to you next?
Sure. Thank you, Your Worship. Just as your representative on St. John Energy, I really just want to reiterate what a high-performing both board and company we have over there. Ryan gave you a few things that they're involved with, but they really are leading edge for the size of company, and they do punch well above their weight. I will just mention, you know, with regards to the legislation, my conversations with our local St. John MLAs have been good, but I would echo what a few others have said, but with a little bit of a twist of, when you contact your MLAs, ask what you can do to help. My understanding is that it is something that they want to see help move forward, but as we know, you know, the province is more than just our St. John MLAs, and anything we can do to support them, to help it continue to move forward, I think is important, because what's, ultimately, what's good for St. John Energy is good for the City of St. John. St. John Energy customers are all St. John residents, so we share the customer base. St. John Energy is solely owned by the City of St. John, so I think it's going to take a whole effort by our community to help get this legislation across the finish line. Thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. I'll go to Counselor Redwin next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming, Ryan. It's always great to hear from you. Even though I'm not going to get into a discussion about it, but I'm getting questions about the solar project. Just wondering if you do have an email or how, if St. John Energy's answering any questions for residents, where would you want them directed?
So, related to the solar project, that was, so certainly they could reach out through our communications, you know, email, but what I would say is, UKC is planning to have some public town hall sessions as part of the EIA that will be starting here this fall, so, you know, in a few short, you know, weeks. So, there will be ample opportunity for to folks to come out to learn more, to have their questions answered here very shortly.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go to Counselor Harrison just a second for round two.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, go ahead.
This probably was the question I should have asked. What's at stake here if we don't change the legislation? And how tied are your hands on some of this? I know we've talked about it before, but I, you know, I still struggle to grasp some of those risk factors. I know that there's many things that St. John Energy would love to do, and many fields it would love to enter, that other utilities in the country get to because their legislation is permissive and appropriate, but what is your focus if legislative reform can happen in New Brunswick?
Now, Ryan, before you answer that, I just want to, I guess, I just want to set the stage for everybody that's listening to, because it's 1922 your legislation was created? Was it '22 or '23, '22?
'22, yes.
'22, and you're allowed to do two things. What are they?
So, we are allowed to distribute electricity within the city limits of St. John, and then we are allowed to rent-lease the electric stove and electric water heaters.
That's it. That's what they're allowed to do. So, everything else is at risk to a certain extent. So, I'll let you, I'll toss it back to you to sort of figure out, like, where you would like to see it go, but that's what you're allowed to do.
Right. I would add, like, our pursuits of renewable energy is allowed as part of the distribution of electricity, so that is not, like, we're not looking for more or less abilities through the Electricity Act related to the ability to develop renewable energy inside the city limits or lands adjacent to the city limits. That is fully onsite and enabled, but things other than that very quickly fall into a bit of a gray area. So, even what I spoke about previously, this opportunity with the FCM funding, we're not perfectly enabled to do that. We've had to spend a lot of time and energy and money with lawyers, like, okay, how can we make this, you know, make this work? And so, that would be an example of something that's a very real opportunity that would drive employment, savings for our customers, that, you know, we would have the wherewithal to be able to execute, you know, quite effectively. The other opportunity that's near and present in front of us is there are other utilities that are smaller in size than St. John Energy that would like to leverage us to outsource certain aspects of their operation, you know, to help them to catch up, and we would love to be able to do that. Again, that would drive employment in St. John. Those benefits would be able to be shared, you know, with our customers and the shareholder of the City of St. John if we were enabled to do that. So, that's just two. There would be many. I could continue to go on, but those are two that are near and present for St. John Energy today.
Yeah, and I think that's the frustrating part here, is there's no, we don't hear from MB Power as to why there is this delay, and/or if it is from them, or, you know, who's in the way of this. It's such a problematic piece to it, and, you know, as citizens, it becomes difficult to navigate that. But I hear what you're saying. There's customers lined up that you guys would love to work with, but you're not permitted or unable to do so. So, anyway, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, Deputy, do you want to wrap this up for us?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Ryan, is there any other place in Canada that's in this situation, or is this province sort of unique?
So, in terms of, like, municipally-owned electric utilities, the vast majority of them would have the structure, the governance structure that we are pursuing. It would be very common, for example, in Ontario and Alberta, but there would be other municipally-owned electric utilities in New Brunswick, Berthandover and Edmonton would have one, you know, so they would be in a similar situation as us, but not necessarily, perhaps, you know, adamantly pursuing the same structure. But, you know, again, quite simply, the structure that we are pursuing, you know, would align us with the majority of other municipally-owned utilities operating in this country.
Okay. That's good to know, too. So, best practice is not what we're doing right now?
But what we are hoping to be able to do.
What we are hoping to do, but not what we're doing right now. Okay, thanks.
Well, I just want to say thank you for being here. It was nice to have some of the questions clarified, nice for the public to understand. I mean, I think everybody, everyone's, not just council, but I think all St. Johners are proud of St. John Energy, and we're proud to say that that's a, you know, part of the city, and, you know, the work that you do, the innovation that you do, the paths that you fall, you know, you're looking with the wind, with Zero-30, with all sorts of things, you know, so it's really great, and it is something that, like I said, makes us very proud. So, it's nice to be here. In New Brunswick, we have a very, and you know, this patriarchal system, and we need to ask permission for everything that we do. We've asked permission for several years to have St. John Energy Incorporated. It just hasn't happened yet, so we're working with a new government, and it could still happen. So, just want to say thanks for being here.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your support.
It was a pleasure. Thank you, Ryan. Okay, I'll take a motion to receive for information. Counselor Harrison, Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Thank you. Next item is under consideration of bylaws. It's item 10.1, and this is a public presentation of proposed municipal plan text amendment for solar energy development.
Commissioner Pofanov, I'm sending this over to you to read into the minutes.
Thank you, Your Worship. For our council's information, a public presentation is a procedural requirement under the Provincial Community Planning Act for municipal plan amendment applications. This evening's public presentation for text amendments related to solar energy development commences a 30-day public review period during which members of the public may provide written submissions on the application as an early step in the process. Any submissions received will come back to council following the close of the 30-day public review period for consideration before moving forward in the process. Following the 30-day period, it is anticipated that on September 8th, Common Council will refer the application to the Planning Advisory Committee for review and recommendation. Given this, the application is tentatively scheduled for the September 16th Planning Advisory Committee meeting and public hearing at the Common Council meeting on October 6th. With that, as an introduction, I will now read into the public record a copy of the public notice that commences the 30-day public review period, and you can see on the screen... With that as an introduction, I will now read into the public record a copy of the public notice that commences the 30-day public review period, and you can see on the screen, hopefully, the location of the subject property. Well, it's a text amendment, so it wouldn't be on the screen. Public notice is hereby given that the Common Council of the City of St. John intends to consider an amendment to the municipal development plan that would permit solar energy development within additional zones in the city's rural areas. Written objections to the proposed amendment may be made to council by August 27th, and inquiries may be made to the Office of the City Clerk or Growth and Community Services in City Hall between 8:30 and 4:30 Monday through Friday. Thank you, worship.
Something did there. Thank you. Next item, city clerk.
Your worship, just wanted to point out that we did have two council members who weren't present for all the public hearings at the last meeting. So Counselor Norton would be required to withdraw for items 10-2 to 10-5, and Counselor Lowe was absent for item 10-2 and 10-5. So...
10-2 to 10, 2-10-5?
10-2 and 10-5.
But he was there for 10-3 and 4?
Right. So if we, if we were to place 10-2 at the end, Counselor Lowe could remain at the meeting and then just leave for the last two.
All right.
And so the first one, so...
So Counselor Norton has to...
Would need to withdraw at this point.
Needs to withdraw, okay. And we're gonna, we're gonna do 10-3 and 4.
That's correct.
Okay.
So 10-3 would be the municipal plan amendment, zoning bylaw amendment, rescission of previous Section 59 conditions, Section 59 agreement, and Section 131 agreement for 500 Pelton Road, also known as Ethos Ridge.
Okay, so I'm passing this over to the commissioner for the intro.
Yes, thank you, worship and members of council. Before you this evening for third reading is an application for a municipal plan amendment and rezoning that was submitted by Don Morris surveys and engineering LTD for a property located at 500 Pelton Road. The application would permit the development of townhouses and semi-detached dwellings on a private street. The application received first and second reading on July 7th following the required public hearing, and I can confirm that all legislative requirements of the Community Planning Act have been met, and the item is now before you to move forward with third reading. Included in your council agenda package is a supplementary report providing language for a proposed sunset clause that would form part of the Section 59 conditions. Additionally, staff has provided language which would restrict the use of Pelton Road for site access. It was a late addition to the package this afternoon. I will now turn it over to Punkaj Nalavde, Director of Community Planning and Housing, to speak to the additional conditions.
Thank you, commissioner. Good evening, your worship and council. To the city clerk, I'm looking at the agenda, and 138 for Latimer Lake is ahead of Pelton Road. Did I miss something?
Yeah, so what we've done is we've switched that, because Counselor Lowe wasn't here for 5 or 10-2, so we're going to drop that one, so that Counselor Lowe can be here for 10-3, and then 4, and then withdraw, and we'll do 10-2 and 10-5, or vice versa.
Appreciate the clarification. Sorry for that. So on this particular item, on July 7th, 2025, following a public hearing, Common Council gave first and second readings to the municipal plan amendment to redesignate the site at 500 Pelton Road from major community facility to stable residential. The same evening, first and second readings were given to rezone the property from major community facility to low-rise residential zone. The rezoning would facilitate the development of low-density serviced 24 townhouses over six lots and 16 semi-detached units along eight lots, a total of 40 units, on a private road access from Sandy Point Road. Common Council, through its discussion, requested staff prepared language for Section 59 conditions that would impose two conditions. One would be a sunset clause on the project, and the second would be a Section 59 to limit access from 500 Pelton Road. So both of those conditions have been added to the resolution sheet under item as condition D and condition E. So Section 59, condition D, is crafted to say that within five years of the date of the rezoning coming into effect, a building permit shall have been issued for one dwelling unit. If the building permit has not been issued, council may take steps to cancel the resolution and repeal the rezoning pursuant to Section 59 and 59/6 of the Community Planning Act. So what we have done here is we are requiring the developer to build at least one unit in the next five years, but preceding the construction of the one unit, they have to invest and build the roads, extend the services, do the development agreement, all the rest of the investment. So what we are expecting is that the most of the investment is actually in, in the next five years, and then it gives the developer some flexibility to complete the development, whether it's five years or seven years. That will be dictated by market demand. So that's condition number D. It is included as an optional condition in your resolution sheet. The second condition is condition E, and it's much more straightforward. It says there shall be no vehicular access to the development of Pelton Road. All vehicular access, including construction traffic, shall be from Sandy Point Road. So at the last council meeting, there was a discussion, but there wasn't a motion passed. We've taken the approach of using the language from the previous condition, and we are here to see if you want any changes or approve it as proposed.
Thank you, Punkaj. I just want to be clear for this, because I highlighted this in my kit. So in order for the developer to begin work within five years, he has to have the road already in, he has to have the water and the sewerage in before he can even apply for the permit. He has to apply for the permit prior to the five-year period or the sunset clauses kicks in.
I mean, at that point, it would come back to council, and council would decide if you want to repeal the rezoning at that point.
Right, okay.
So if a developer is honestly undertaking some work, we would try and work with them. But yes, in this case, before getting a permit issued, all the necessary infrastructure to support that home has to be in.
Right, so it's linked to the sunset clause again as well, is with the, okay. All right, sounds perfect. Anyone have any questions for Punkaj? Deputy, you have a question?
Yeah, just for clarification. So the infrastructure all has to be in, plus one house has to be completely built at the end of the five-year period, correct?
We generally only look at the development permit. Once we issue the permit, there is some leeway for him to finish that within the five years. But for the most part, the infrastructure and all the major investment will have to be in before we issue any permits.
Yeah, that's the most expensive part of the whole thing, getting the infrastructure. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so city clerk, I'm going to pass it over to you for motions. Where are my motions?
Your worship, there are quite a few here. We have eight separate motions needed. We begin with municipal plan needs approval a third reading by entirety and then by title.
Reading, okay. Approved third reading by entirety, and I'll take a second on that. Counselor Darling on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Oh, opposed, sorry. Counselor Redwine, was there another? I thought you said two. Oh, Counselor Ogden, opposed. Motion carried.
I just have to read it out, unfortunately. I'll go quickly. The municipal plan of the city of St. John enacted on the 30th day of January 2012 is amended by one redesignating on Schedule B of the municipal development plan, land having an area of approximately 8.46 hectares, located at 500 Pelton Road, also identified as PID 552 38471, from major community facility to stable residential. And now by title?
By title, Counselor Harris and the deputy on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Redwine? Counselor Ogden, are you opposing or are you for that? Are you opposing? Motion carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw. And now for the zoning, we require the third reading by entirety.
Third reading, okay, sorry, by entirety.
And then by title.
Deputy and Counselor Killen on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Ogden and Counselor Redwine opposing. Motion carried.
The zoning bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by amending Schedule A the zoning map of the city of St. John by rezoning land having an area of approximately 8.46 hectares located at 500 Pelton Road, also identified as PID 552 38471, from major community facility to low-rise residential.
Okay, I need approval, a motion to approve third reading by title. Deputy, Counselor Darling on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Redwine and Counselor Ogden opposing. Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Next motion.
And next is to rescind or rescission of previous Section 59 conditions.
Rescission of previous 59. Counselor Harrison, Counselor Darling on the question. All in favor? Aye, okay. Opposed? So Counselor Ogden opposed, only opposing vote. Motion carries.
And next motion is approving Section 59 conditions, and we just have to clarify whether or not council is interested in approving the ones with the D and E that have been added that were sent to you.
Okay, we've got our mover and our second on that. On the question, all in favor? Opposed? Counselor Ogden voting opposed. Motion carries.
And next would be resolution required for Section 59 agreement.
Section 59 agreement. Counselor Stewart and Counselor Lowe on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Ogden opposing. Motion carries.
And the final one is a Section 131 agreement.
Section 131 agreement. Counselor Killen and Counselor, and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Ogden, you're in favor or opposed? Counselor Ogden opposed. Motion carried.
And that's everything for that one.
10-3. Next item, then?
Next is 10.4, a zoning bylaw amendment for 224 Anthony Cove Road.
Okay. Commissioner, are you, no, you don't need to do this one. We think we're good with this one, aren't we? Or are we? You're going to introduce it?
I'm introducing 10-4.
10-4, yes.
Yep. Thank you, worship and members of council. Before you this evening for third reading is an application for a rezoning that was submitted by Tricia and Jeff Perry for a property located at 224 Anthony's Cove Road. The rezoning would permit the conversion of a residential property into a personal wellness business. The application received first and second reading on July 7th following the required public hearing, and I can confirm that all legislative requirements of the Community Planning Act have been met, and the item is now before you to move forward with third reading. Yeva Matson, the planner on the file is available if there are any questions. Thank you.
John, thank you. Over to you.
Thank you. Only two motions required here. Approval, third reading by entirety, and then by title.
Entirety and title, Counselor Darling and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? No opposing votes. Motion carries.
The zoning bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by amending Schedule A the zoning map of the city of St. John by rezoning a parcel land having an area of approximately 10,869 square meters located at 224 Anthony's Cove Road, also identified as PID 00336339, from rural residential to rural general commercial.
Okay, I need a motion to approve third reading by title. Counselor Harris and Counselor Redwine on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Next item, city clerk.
And so Counselor Lowe will now withdraw, and we'll move on to item 10.5.
10.5?
Which is the zoning bylaw amendment, Section 59 conditions, amended list of official street names, investigation of intersection and citizen concerns in Area 5, pardon me, 859 Sand Cove Road, third reading.
Okay, I'm going to send this one over to the commissioner to introduce, please.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. Before you for third reading is an application for a rezoning that was submitted by Rick Turner for a property located at 859 Sand Cove Road. The rezoning would permit the development of three multi-unit residential buildings in addition to the existing daycare center. The application received first and second reading on July 7th following the required public hearing, and I can confirm that all legislative requirements of the Community Planning Act have been met, and the item is now before you to move forward with third reading. Included in your agenda package is a supplementary report that addresses possible Section 59 conditions associated with the development. This includes information related to the intersection of Blurry Street and Sand Cove Road. I'll now turn it over to Yeva Matson, the planner on the file, to speak to the information in the supplemental report. Thank you.
Good evening. Before you for third reading is a rezoning application, and I will keep it brief. We just wanted to discuss some of the conditions and the recommendations we did not have time to discuss at first and second reading. So before you, while PAC and our, and staff are in alignment on recommending the rezoning from CFN to RM for some multi-unit four-story buildings, PAC did make an additional recommendation for a Section 59 limiting the development to four stories. Staff are asking that council reconsider whether the proposed condition by PAC to limit height is necessary and whether it aligns with the city's housing objectives and zoning reform that intended to support density in key locations well-served by infrastructure. We recently saw the RM zone changed during our zoning reform to allow for six stories by right to encourage density, and during the last meeting, we also heard from Envision St. John that conditions can be, can have unintended consequences by limiting a developer's ability to adapt to evolving circumstances, especially regarding financial feasibility. The developer has confirmed that the project will not exceed four stories, and they've entered an agreement with the community through the Duck Cove Association to limit it to four stories maximum, and this comes with clauses that would mean they would have to go back to the community through open house and discussion to later decide if they want to alter this. That is just a civil contract, has nothing to do with our council. Section 59 conditions also remain on sites indefinitely until removed by this council, and we've seen multiple cases in the past few years where people have come back to remove conditions laid down up to 50 years ago that now do not make sense in the neighborhood context. With that information, staff are asking council to reconsider the necessity of a Section 59 condition. As a quick note, there were also two other recommendations made during first and second reading that staff do support, one being the city staff investigate the intersection of Blurry, Seawood, and Sand Cove, as well as the parking situation on Duck Cove Lane. From my understanding, our traffic and parking staff are already looking into these as directed. And then the final, short recommendation is just a simple recommendation to change the street name list and accept Tranquility Place as the name for that private access, and this is just a request from our GIS team for proper addressing. Thank you for your time, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Questions. Counselor Harris, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. What's the cost to remove a Section 59 currently?
So it's the same cost as an entire rezoning, so it's $2,750, but that doesn't include any of the prepared site plans they bring forward, any of the surveys they have to do, or any of the application package.
So now you're up with $13,000?
And it's council's time and staff.
And staff time.
Yeah, okay, so you're, you're trying to get us to remove that for somebody in the future, because Mr. Turner has already committed to that.
Yes.
Part of me wonders, well, what's the problem with putting this in place, because it gives some peace to the residents who are really concerned about this exceeding what we might call gentle density, but then part of me understands where you're coming from. So can you help me bridge this gap here? We're hoping to solve a problem that doesn't currently exist for somebody down the road. With that, though, comes the risk, from what I see, so correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm misanalyzing this risk, the risk we have currently is if we don't have a Section 59 limiting it to four stories, and Mr. Turner, not that I know you would, Mr. Turner, Mr. Turner decides, well, we need to get that six stories or else we're not going to go forward, and now I'm deciding not to come true on my commitment to the community. Again, not that you ever would, but this is my predicament here, is we don't really have an enforcement mechanism to honor that agreement. Am I wrong?
You are not wrong. It is a decision to weigh the necessity of a condition versus future development versus what do we intend when we did the changes to the RM zone to allow from four to six if we weren't going to allow for six stories.
Okay, I see Punkaj wants to also add something, so I'm curious.
To Counselor Harris, I think what we are really trying to do is start to clarify our messaging regarding medium-density sites. I think if we keep bringing forward medium-density sites, partly we miss an opportunity, but we want to ensure that the development industry understands that if I'm targeting a medium-density site, then there is a certain envelope that I can benefit from. I think right now, we bring these conditions forward, and every time we impose a condition, we treat every site like a spot zoning, which means there is no certainty, despite our governing, what can you build with it. That's just piece number one. The second piece, we are going through an economically volatile time, right? Costs are going up, rents are all over the place. Most developers, after the rezoning, is really when they start doing the detailed calculations. In this particular project, they have expectations of a constructed garage at a ground level.
Yeah, yeah.
on top of only a three-story building, which really means that there is significant cost. And the developer may or may not arrive at a surprise. I don't know that. But that's for them to explore. What we are trying to do is when developments come forward, there is enough framework within the zoning to set them up for success. What we don't want is them to constantly come back, constantly go through these negotiations.
I know I'm at time. Can I recap that just so that I could clarity?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm hearing you saying is that we can't control what happens here with this building. We want to send a signal to the broader community about what gentle density means in medium density zoned areas. So am I understanding that you, that from the planning perspective, in with regard to what we've set out our priorities as well as new agreements with the half funding and all that, that we see medium density as exceeding four stories and therefore if we call this medium density and keep it to four stories, it's a mixed signal to the development community? Is that the, like, okay?
Right.
I see that the commissioner wants to pipe in on that too as well. Commissioner, over to you.
Yes, thank you, your worship and through you to Counselor. Listen, Yeva and Punkage has covered this very well. I just wanted to mention another thing to consider. When you think about what happens in the field, once people are getting down to detailed design and they're dealing with parking garages and things like this, you may get into a grade situation from code that pops the building into five stories. But to the users or the neighborhood, it looks like four. But just because of grade differential, it pops you into five stories from a code issue. Then we've got ourselves an issue here. So there are just things that happen through the course of detailed design and when you're limited to four stories, you know, it just brings about potential issues and I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. And others, actually. We have run into some grade issues when they need to modify grade to access a parking garage and now it pops it into a different number of stories, although really from a user perspective, it kind of looks the same. So there's things like that that do happen and we have run into it more than once.
Yep. Can I add to that as well, that we often see that at a staff level as well? They have to come in for variance for .25 of a story because we measure from grade and we average it out. So even if that parking garage only adds a little bit, we would round it to 4.25 stories. Year-over-year limit.
But I think the most important story with this is that it does send a destabilizing message because in January, we said that medium residential, medium density would be six. We've had two apps for it. One, we've turned down flat and this one, we've reduced to four. So if every medium density developer thinks he's going to do something, they don't know what St. John's going to do at the end of the day. So I don't like that. And the other thing is we took the half money with the promise of saying that we would change that to six stories and we did that. But we turned one down and then we're reducing this one. So I feel like it impacts our credibility to a certain extent because did we do that with genuine intent to have residential medium be six? We say it in words, but then two times now, we want to try to change it. So that's where I am on it, you know, going forward. Counselor Redwine, where are you on this?
Thank you, mayor. I agree with you. And I do want to ask though, Punkage, I think, you know, we were approving so much with the bylaw reform, right? So help us understand maybe a little bit. So if somebody comes in and they want to do an RM zone, they're mostly doing it, what, in the PDA, outside the PDA? Like, can you kind of give a little bit of guidance that way? Like where, you know, it's not going to be, you know, obviously out by the airport that somebody's putting in six stories. So give us an idea of exactly, like, where are we looking if we're thinking about it just overall?
So our RM zone is intended for in the PDA. We haven't ever approved one outside the PDA through a rezoning, as far as I'm aware of. It also has to usually be on a serviced site as part of the policy. So we want these density projects where there's already that infrastructure and servicing so that we don't have to upgrade that as well.
And of course, when I'm thinking about it, I'm thinking there's been a lot of development in the PDA, Millidgeville, getting into Lakewood Heights. So these are some areas that, you know.
If I can add, in addition, we are looking for primary corridors, right? It's the intersection of major corridors that are serviced by bus, that is ample transportation capacity. That prevalence of infrastructure is what is guiding this desire to maximize output in key locations. We are not suggesting six stories right in the midst of a residential block. I think the other two pieces of opportunities that we aren't capitalizing is if we know that we can let the developer exploit the height envelope, we will be in a better position to ask developers to invest in the infrastructure that goes around the properties. Right now, these are partly being negotiated through contributions from the city. But if we understand the developer is able to get a good product out of it, we can take that next step and as redevelopment happens, we can start to redevelop the infrastructure. So it gives us a better negotiating ability going forward.
Yeah, that helps. I mean, if you're thinking of the primary corridors, you're thinking about, you know, maximizing those services, filling up your St. John Transit, all of those sort of things that that can help make life a lot easier for residents. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think Counselor, yes, he does. Counselor Sullivan has his hand up up there. So I want to go to him next. Counselor?
Thank you, your worship. I appreciate the conversation, getting into philosophical things about the RM zone. But what we have in front of us is a specific reading, a third reading of something we had a public hearing about. And in that public hearing, nobody who stood up and presented in front of us in the public hearing said, this should be six stories. So while I accept and understand the conversation that's going on kind of theoretically about the RM zone, I would like to bring us back to the situat-
Oh, we've lost your voice. We see your picture. Yeah, maybe if you do that, drop the video. Can you, yes, this isn't a public hearing. And see if we can pick up video or audio. I think we're, he's gone. Yeah, he has had spotty coverage. He texted me that to say that. Maybe I'll go to Counselor Harris. This is your last round.
I kind of hear what Gary's saying. We can go back to Gary. But I kind of hear what Gary's saying. We entered into this on a third reading or first and second reading public hearing with this sense to come back.
I brought this up.
I think I have been persuaded by staff to, and even your comments, mayor, to remove that. However, there was one other item that I was at least personally adamant that we have some sort of visibility on for third reading, which was the intersection, the intersection analysis. I'm not looking for a planned design overview here. I'm just looking for some sort of commitment to say, we understand that this is an increase. We understand that this comes with major changes. We understand that this intersection already has issues. Here's what our plan is to look at it from a design perspective and to come back with some proposals at some point in the future. Like, I'm just looking for a date so that we can eyeball that with the community.
Sure. So I guess two things. First of all, the development itself has already been confirmed to not impact the intersection problems that are there. The traffic side did confirm that. Nevertheless, we do often have concerns from the community about different intersections and this came up as part of the public hearing. So needless to say, it's raised up on our priority list to look at this intersection higher than it would have been otherwise. And we've already started looking at it.
Okay.
I mean, we understand what the community's concerns are. Like, it's not the normal intersection with one leg, a before-leg intersection not having a stop sign. So we're going to look at that. But we do want to have a bit of a meeting with the community members and just get real good understanding of what their concerns are. So whatever solution we come up with, they're going to address their concerns.
Yeah, I'm happy to help, you know, put forward anything we need to at this point if it's needed, but if your team's on it.
Yeah.
As long as I know that the community's being consulted on that, you know, I just want to know that by the end of the year, we have a bit of a framework around, yes, you know, comprehensive redesign is needed or no, we need minor changes and everybody's good, something like that, so.
Yeah, so confirm changes by the end of the year and depending on the scale, potentially next year in terms of the improvements.
Right, okay.
It's a great time to be looking at it, Director O'Reilly, because we've got, the land is there. I mean, there's a big piece of land. Maybe it would fit around a boat. I would assume that all of those options will be looked at. And as you say, it's been escalated now on the priority list with this big development going in. So that's good to hear as well.
Hundred percent.
Excellent. Okay, I guess.
May I address the part of Counselor Sullivan's comment about the public? We did have Envision here who did speak in favor of not putting the condition on and asked at the time, he said he'd spoke to Rick Turner about going higher density and Rick had said no, but that we should leave the condition off for flexibility. So while it wasn't said that they want six stories, there was conversation from the public about not capping it at four.
Right.
Just for clarity.
Okay. And unfortunately, I don't think we're going to get Counselor Sullivan back for this, so. Oh, there he is. Counselor Sullivan, we're waiting for you to wrap up your comments.
I'm not sure at what point, you lost me, but that's okay. My internet up here is a little spotty. No, I just, we're, I just felt we were getting really much into the philosophy of this situation and the main proponents. And I accept that Envision arriving for four public hearings decided to speak to two and talk to that. But even that, I think, was more not specific to this zoning, but go to six wherever you can. That's what I took it for. Anyway, I don't want to hold this development up, which seems to be a very good development, ready to go, when all the main players are good to go. So let's go.
Okay, city clerk, you might as well start with the first few motions and see where we go.
Okay, now for this item, we require five motions. Zoning is first, third reading by title or by entirety and then by title.
Third reading by entirety. Okay, we'll do, come. Okay, and on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
The zoning bylaw the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by amending Schedule A the zoning map of the city of St. John by rezoning a parcel of land having an area of approximately 19,208 square meters located at 859 Sand Cove Road also identified as PID 00394809 from neighborhood community facility to mid-rise residential.
Okay, third reading by title? Counselor Harris and Counselor Redwine on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Next one?
Next is for the Section 59 conditions.
That's to approve the limit to four stories. I have eight counselors here. If I have to break this, I'm a nay. On the, so I need a. Yeah, no, I'm not, I don't, I am not in favor of that section.
The staff, it was outlined in the staff recommendation that would have been accompanied your packet.
Yep.
Let me just get the exact.
It says, A, that the height of the development be limited to four stories, Section 59.
So are we taking that out, your worship?
Well, should we vote on it?
If it doesn't move, if no one moves it, I don't think we have to.
Oh, okay. Wait, do we have to move? Is that how that works, city clerk?
Might ask a planner in this situation or our legal counsel.
Do you need someone to move it to get it on the table?
Second reading, I think, just to get it over quick, they had bumped it off to third reading, so we did include it in the packet in case it was adopted. But I don't believe you need to adopt.
Okay. Next item then.
So we're skipping the Section 59.
Okay.
And so the next would be common council amend the list of official street names and approve the following changes.
Counselor Darling, Counselor Stewart on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And then there was that council direct staff to investigate infrastructure at the intersection of Blurry Street, Sand Cove Road and direct the planning, the parking department to investigate the concerns of residents at Duck Cove Lane.
Yeah. Counselor Killen and Counselor Redwine on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now?
And now 10-2, which we added as the last one, your worship. Which is the municipal plan amendment and zoning amendment at 1384 Latimer Lake Road.
Commissioner Proffinrod, over to you for intro.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. Before you for third reading is an application for a municipal plan amendment and rezoning that was submitted by Tom Cole for a property located at 1384 Latimer Lake Road. The application would permit the development of a mini home park on a private street. The application received first and second reading on July 7th following the required public hearing and I can confirm that all legislative requirements of the Community Planning Act have been met. And the item is now before you to move forward with third reading. Included in your package is a supplementary report identifying proposed Section 59 conditions, excuse me, associated with the protection of the potable watershed and information associated with previously approved residential subdivisions. I'll now turn it over to Punkage Nalavde, your director of community planning and housing, to speak to the additional conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Proffinrod. Good evening, your worship, members of council. So for third reading of this particular file, staff are recommending the incorporation of two Section 59 conditions. These are new, but these are being proposed to protect the city's portable water watershed. And the reason is that the front end of the site overlaps with that watershed. So the two conditions really are that no motor vehicles or construction equipment shall be parked, shall be allowed to park within the Latimer Lake protected portable watershed area on this property, which is within 240 meters of the center line of Latimer Lake. And the second condition quite simply is to install a no parking signage on this driveway, which shall be installed and maintained along the driveway of the property within Latimer Lake, portable water watershed at a spacing of no greater than 30 meters. So really install some signage at spacing of 30 meters. That's the only conditions we've brought forward. This condition is proposed by St. John Water and has been supported by our staff. So it is new, but we weren't contemplating, we didn't know if this was going to get approved. But now that we know, we just need to ensure we are protecting the watershed, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, city clerk, over to you for the motions.
In this case, five motions, first and second readings for municipal and zoning bylaw and Section 59.
Okay, approve third reading by entirety. Counselor Harris and Counselor Darling on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Counselor Sullivan, are you for or, the, there's a little, you're for? Okay, good. There's a little delay in this, so I want to make sure. Thank you.
The municipal plan bylaw of the city of St. John.
What's getting turbocharged? Okay.
The municipal plan bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the 30th day of January 2012 is amended by one redesigning on Schedule A of the municipal development plan, land having an area of approximately 3.6 hectares located at 1384 Latimer Lake Road also identified as PID 55203095 from rural resource area to stable area, number two, redesigning on Schedule B of the municipal development plan, land having an area of approximately 3.6 hectares located at 1384 Latimer Lake Road also identified as a part of PID 55203095 from rural resource to rural residential.
Thank you. So I need a motion to approve third reading by title. Counselor Darling and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw.
Okay, we need a motion, okay, you're into the.
For zoning.
For zoning, yeah. And third reading by entirety. Counselor Stewart and Counselor Killen on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
The zoning bylaw the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by amending Schedule A the zoning map of the city of St. John by rezoning land having an area of approximately 3.9 hectares located at 1384 Latimer Lake Road also identified as part of PID 55203095 from rural to mini home park residential.
Okay, a motion to approve third reading by title. Counselor Harris and Counselor Darling on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John and there's also a Section 59 on this item.
Okay, so the Section 59, so need a motion to approve the Section 59 conditions. Okay, so the Section fifty-nine, so need a motion to approve the Section fifty-nine conditions. Counselor Darling and Counselor Redwin on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. All right, City Clerk.
And now the two council members who had withdrawn are welcome back in.
Okay, the party's over back there, folks. Get back in here. Okay, City Clerk, next item.
And next is item eleven-point-one, a submission by the Deputy Mayor, a notice of motion submission. It's entitled Enforcement Options Regarding the Keeping of Animals.
Deputy, over to you to read this into the minutes, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. My proposed motion is that the C.A.O. be directed to investigate and report back on potential enforcement options at the city's disposal to address the challenges associated with the keeping of wild, domestic, and exotic animals.
Okay, excellent. Okay. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is under Business Matters, item twelve-point-one, and it's an update regarding housing for all strategy.
Commissioner Pofenroth, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. The City of St. John's housing for all strategy embodies our community's united and compassionate approach to addressing homelessness over the next three years using a person-centered and human rights approach. I'd like to now introduce Greg Cutler, the city's Community Development Manager, to present an update on the city's housing for all strategy. This update will recognize significant milestones, including the opening of our first green zone later this week, outline work that's currently underway, and highlight action items to be addressed in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Pofenroth. Good evening, Mayor, council, and members of senior leadership. My name is Greg Cutler, and I serve as the Community Development Manager for the City of St. John. And I'm here tonight to provide that update on the housing for all strategy, looking to talk about some milestones and ongoing initiatives, just to give an update of where we are. Housing for all strategy is a roadmap to a shared goal of every resident having a safe, supported, and sustainable home using a person-centered, human rights approach. The housing for all strategy was approved by council in 2024, and the strategy contains twenty-eight action items that all levels of government and community agencies are focused on to support the unhoused community. In February 2025, the City of St. John received funding through the federal funding through the province of Edinburgh as part of the Unsheltered Homelessness and Encampment Initiative. This funding enables the implementation of actions within the strategy. And just when I mention the ongoing initiatives, to the end of 2025, we actually are focused on four objectives, which breaks down to seven action items. The objectives fall under coordination and governance, emergency supports, prevention, education and safety, and housing supports. And in those four objectives, there's seven action items that we're working on to the end of the year, which we'll discuss a little bit later. So the slide that you're looking at now shows our green zones. As we, sorry, as we mentioned, there are two green zone sites, which are, were approved by council in late May. One green zone is located on Egbert Street, while the other is located on Thorn Avenue. And these are safe, supported transitional housing options for individuals who are currently homeless. Neighborly Homes, as part of the Twelve Neighbors Incorporated, is constructing the courtyards and will be operating both green zone sites through an agreement with the City of St. John. The Egbert Street Green Zone will welcome clients to Courtyard One and Two throughout August, and Thorn Avenue Site is on track to open December first. The opening of the green zones is a very important milestone for the housing for all strategy, which one we celebrate, but we're also working on the other initiatives at the same time. I know a number of people were able to take a look at the Green Zone Pilot Neighborly Home Egbert Street Site today. But this picture on the screen does kind of provide an outlook of what the site actually looks like and what to expect when you're there. These courtyards provide temporary transitional housing for up to twenty-seven individuals per green zone site for a total of fifty-four. An individual living on site can expect a unit with a bed, a locked door, heat, lights, internet access, and access to a shared washroom and laundry facilities. And in terms of security, safety, the green zone will each have twenty-four-seven onsite staffing, swipe card access for individuals coming and going, security cameras, and also a shared space for clients to meet with social support professionals throughout their stay. And just to note, the St. John Police Force Quick Reaction Team will also be conducting foot and vehicle patrols in the area as well. They've been great to work with. Another highlight that I want to bring to your attention is the community supports piece. We do have an outreach team now. Fresh Start holds a holds a service agreement with Social Development to provide homelessness outreach support within the community. And this support can include anything from encampment wellness checks, data and information gathering, and homelessness diversion initiatives. In addition, the outreach team plays a vital role with city staff on encampment cleanups and relocations as well. This is important to note, the outreach support team will soon be bolstered with additional staffing through a service agreement with the City of St. John. A request for proposal was issued recently and is currently in the evaluation phase. And in terms of timing, we expect to be back in front of council in, later in the summer, to work through the service agreement with the extended outreach support team. The second part of the slide addresses the red zones, which kind of go along with the green zones we discussed earlier. These are specific locations within the city where encampments are not permitted. Just as an example, the red zone could be around schools, splash pads, childcare centers, sport facilities. Some considerations to determine the red zones include the safety of all community members, homeless in the community, human rights laws, and individual rights to adequate housing, focusing on a person-centered approach, and a need to determine appropriate available spaces where individuals can be safely relocated to. Now, the red zone is a major component of the housing for all strategy. The framework we're working on right now, looking at developing operational guidelines, process protocols, policies, standard operating procedures. Knowing that is a large piece of the housing for all strategy. We are working on that. The framework will be ready for late summer, early fall, again, to bring back to council for the 2025 deadline. Some of the currently ongoing and upcoming actions. So in August, Neighborly Homes will be welcoming participants to our Egbert Street location. Again, twenty-seven in total. Throughout August, the expanded outreach team service agreement will be worked through. Late summer, early fall, we'll have the red zone framework. September, Thorn Avenue Green Zones site work begins. And in December, Neighborly Homes will welcome twenty-seven more individuals to the Thorn Avenue Green Zone Site. We will continue to monitor the site to, for any sort of lessons learned and be able to apply those when Thorn Avenue also opens. It is a complicated file. So we know it's not going to be seamless, but we hope to iron out all the, any kind of issues or concerns we have with ongoing neighborly relations as well. The expanded outreach team and also a few additional staff within our department will, one of our main tasks will be working with the community to make sure neighborly relations are maintained. And just in closing, there's an opportunity for, for anybody within the city, residents or service providers, to to check out our Shape Your City page on the City of St. John website. This is a housing for all focus page. It's an opportunity for individuals to ask questions, share personal experience as they relate to homelessness and our community. Communications Department has helped us set that up, and it's, it has been a way for us to continue connecting with the, with the community on the homeless, homeless file and housing for all. So with that, that provides sort of the ongoing update of what we're working on currently this month, and it'll open up for any questions.
Counselor Ogden, can we hear your question?
Well, I have a comment and a question. Greg, I think it's great that we're getting people into portable housing. I've worked my whole life with food banks and coaching and teaching kids rapport in the city for decades. I didn't get invited to the one o'clock announcement. I wish I would have. But when I got there later, they looked great. So I just want to thank you. I wish I would have been invited to the one o'clock, but I didn't. Thank you.
Through You, Worship, do, Counselor, apologize. I was under the impression that you were invited, and I'm sorry about that. It was nice to see you.
I think, Greg, actually what happens is that because you can see on the screen, the site is so small.
Yeah.
They split it up.
Okay.
And so there was tours starting at one o'clock.
For sure.
And then I believe council was voted, was invited at two o'clock, senior leadership was invited at two o'clock. And it was just trying to break it up a bit, so that, because of the small, because of the small area. No. 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 Yeah. Yeah, okay, that's fine. Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, Worship. I just want to say, Greg, you know, this, it's very, very complicated, you know, trying to deal with homelessness. It's, it's an ongoing issue right across, well, everywhere, not just St. John. But I have to say that a lot of people, you know, for whatever the reasons, and there's many, you know, are down on, you know, the municipal government, federal government, provincial government, you know, about homelessness. And, you know, St. John is the only city in the province that's doing what we're doing and get funded by the federal government because we're going down the right path. And for some people, that might be, you know, wow, I don't get it. Well, it's difficult. It's complicated. But at the end of the day, we're doing something nobody else is doing. And, you know, we're hoping that it's going to pay off in a way that it hasn't anywhere else. So I congratulate you and your team and the senior leadership team for, you know, putting this all together, along with the Social Development, Department of Health, and all the other departments that have gotten involved. And let's hope that, you know, these fifty-four individuals are helped and they move on. And, you know, this is transitional housing, right? And, you know, I'm hoping that it really works because I think, I think there's great potential here. So thanks a lot for all you've done.
Through You, Worship, if I could just respond quickly, just thank you very much for the support. We know it's going to be challenging. We are going to continue working with the service providers on the ground and do our best. You know, I don't know, same, I'm just proud that we're, we're taking this on, and we are trying to make decisions that are, you know, grounded in fact, and we know it's going to be challenging, and we'll come back with, with updates as, as things go on.
Okay, Counselor Redwin, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to quickly say, yeah, through to Greg, you guys have done a great job. And, you know, I would hope that the general public would know to, you've already shared to go on to Shape Your City. They can ask questions, reach out to staff if they have any concerns. I know some people are really frustrated with some, some of the encampment areas that they're seeing. But with the transitional housing taking place, outreach teams will be put in place. You know, I, I hope that the general public will just be a little more patient because things are going to start rolling out and it's going to take a bit of time. But, but I think that, that they'll start to see people being housed and, and actually have an avenue to go so that they're, they're not, you know, living unhoused and, and, you know, in conditions that nobody should live in. So thanks for all your work. The team's done a really good job.
And thanks to all, council and mayor, for your support through this whole process, too.
It's been, it's been a journey. It's all good. Anyways, thanks for being here this evening, and I'll take a motion to receive for information. Counselor Darling and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is an item that would have been taken from the consent agenda, so it's now item fourteen-point-one, but it was five-point-one. And that is for the establishment of City of St. John Medical Education Scholarship in partnership with N.B. Medical Education Foundation.
Okay, Counselor Redwin, you want it this pulled? Oh, okay. So I'll take someone, I need a mover. Counselor Stewart and the deputy. So I'm going to just call the question. All in favor? And opposed? Counselor Redwin voting opposed. Motion carries. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is under General Correspondence, fifteen-point-one. Spruce Lake Industrial Park Expansion Citizens Letters, and recommendation is to receive for information.
Thank you. Counselor Darling on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I just want to say that they are aware of how this process worked. John has spoken to the Laurinville people who have been submitting these. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is fifteen-two. Usher Syndrome Awareness Day Request for Proclamation. Recommendation to refer to clerk's office to prepare.
Counselor Stewart and Counselor Low on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is a letter regarding wharf upgrades. Recommendation to receive for information.
Over in a second, Counsel, the deputy and Counselor Darling on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next, another letter, a citizen letter regarding concerns on Somerset Street. A recommendation to receive for information.
The deputy and Counselor Redwin on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Fifteen-five is a letter from Stevie Gogo. Request to present. Recommendation, refer to Public Safety Committee for presentation.
Okay, I'll take a mover. The deputy and Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is fifteen-point-six, a letter from A. Poddle regarding lack of sidewalk on Broadview Avenue. Recommendation, receive for information.
And there is some information, thank you, there is some information we can send out to Mr. Poddle as well. I'll take a second, there. Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next are items from Committee of the Whole. The first one is seventeen-one, Termination of Lease Java Moose. Resolution would be that the city consent to the termination of lease between the city and Boys Own Inc., dated May twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, effective February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five, on the conditions outlined in Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Further be resolved that mayor and clerk are authorized to execute any such documents necessary to affect the said termination.
Okay, I'll take a mover and a second on that. Counselor Killen and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is seventeen-point-two, with respect to City Market, a lease, new lease with bagel artist. The resolution would be that the city enter into lease generally in the form as attached to MNC twenty-twenty-five-dash-one-ninety for stall nine and ancillary spaces in the city market with Angeli Sylvie Barbosa, bagel artist, and further be resolved that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any necessary documents.
Counselor Killen and the deputy, I'm thrilled about this. I can now walk for my bagels. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Seventeen-three is the next item. Recommendation from Committee of the Whole with respect to City Market, Kim's Korean New Space Lease, and the resolution is that the city enter into the lease and termination agreement with six-nine-zero-zero-four-five-NB Limited, Kim's Korean Food, generally in the form as attached to MNC twenty-twenty-five-dash-one-eighty-two, for the purpose of relocating the tenants' current operations from stall C-one to stalls sixteen and seventeen of the city market, and further be it resolved that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said lease and termination agreement and any other documents ancillary to this transaction.
Counselor Killen and Counselor Darling on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is seventeen-point-four, Committee of the Whole Recommendation with respect to Market Street Kitchen Lease, and the resolution would be that the city enter into a lease for stall sixty and ancillary spaces in the city market with five-zero-five-seven-oh-nine-NB Limited, Market Street Kitchen. Under the terms and conditions as set in the lease submitted with MNC twenty-twenty-five-dash-one-eighty-three, and further be it resolved that the clerk and mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents.
Counselor Low, Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Did you have a question?
Want to make a quick comment. Mayor, I just wanted to make mention that I'm totally supportive of the business going in there. I'm just not in complete agreement with the lease, and that's why I'm voting against it. Thank you.
So I haven't called those opposed. Opposed? Counselor Redwin opposing. Motion carries. Next item, City Clerk.
And the final item is seventeen-point-five, Recommendation from Committee of the Whole with respect to Update on Twenty-Twenty-Five PM-HP Allocation. Resolution would be that council endorse a request to reallocate surplus PM-HP funds for twenty-twenty-five to support resurfacing of additional provincial municipal highways and towards the detailed design of the Rossay Road, Ashburn Road Roundabout. Further, that the city direct the mayor to spend a letter, to send a letter to the Minister of Transportation and Infrastructure requesting a partnership to fund the Locklomond Airport arterial roundabout.
Thank you. Counselor Killen and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
And that was the final item?
No, there's one more. The barack green.
Seventeen-six. Oh, 17-6, my apologies, Your Worship. There's one more page, yep. So this is Barrett Green Status Report, and the resolution is the City Wave Conditions 9.203 of the Contribution Agreement as part of the conditions precedent to the next progress advance regarding the reasonable expectation that substantial completion of the Barrett Green Residence Project will be achieved no later than October 31, 2025 on the following conditions. A, that the CMHC agree to an extension of the substantial completion date in its agreement with the city, or to not exercising its clawback remedy for the city's failure to achieve substantial completion by October 31, 2025. And B, that the contribution agreement between the city and Kaleidoscope be amended to reflect a revised substantial completion date approved by the CMHC, or, or a date that is no later than January 31, 2026. Number two, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the said amendment to the city's contribution agreement with Kaleidoscope Social Impact Inc., and any necessary amendment to the city's rapid housing agreement with CMHC, as well as any other documents ancillary there, too.
Take a mover and a second, there. Councilor Darling, Councilor Norton? On the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Councilor Lowe, over to you. What now?
I know she thought that I forgot, but I didn't. I just want to thank Rayanne McGuire. She's leaving this her last council session, and she's been a real asset to the team, and she's done a lot for me, and I know for many people around the table. So Rayanne, we wish you all the very best in your new endeavor, and I hope that, you know, we see you again down the road. Thank you.
She's been excellent in my office. Thank you, Rayanne. She's going to Ottawa. I told her she's not going to like it. It's too hot there. All right, Councilor Lowe, over to you. Thank you, Councilor Lowe.